I guess we've done it out. Old council, old business, discussion about council voter action, donated time for Pumpkinfest. We need Federal Stone, Mr. Powell.
I'm here to present this tonight. This item came up in a discussion that Pumpkinfest had with finance. And what they did is they went back and produced minutes from an August 2007 meeting, which I provided to the council for the package that Chief C. The interpretation from Pumpkinfest is that the town would donate services in addition to the waiving of permit fees and the location of use for the Pumpkinfest. Now, I don't necessarily interpret reading this as the town offered services. It's clear that they offered the wave of permit fees and the use of the location, but I don't see the funding of services. This would be such as a police detail or the DPW workers setting up booths or things of that nature. So what has been asked of me to present here is would the council be amenable to including in the grant and contribution line item a sum of money, in effect, to donate those services to the Pumpkinfest? This year, it operated with like a $2,000 profit after paying for the services. To spend $14,000 to earn $2,000, is it really worth it to even do the event? So I guess the question is, they want to fund more grants, donations, scholarships from the Pumpkinfest income. And a way to do that would be to have a grant contribution on behalf of the town council. Based on what I've seen, the cost of departments charging them, it's about $2,500 is what, between details, between highway over time. Finance donated their time this year for no cost because it's a matter of just keeping track of ins and outs, which we do anyways. So we don't mind donating our time. But the other departments, a police officer needs to be paid. They can't just show up for a detail for nothing. So I guess my request would be, would we see fit to include a line item from grants and contributions next year to fund services for the Pumpkinfest? Would that be a amenable discussion to have?
I believe so.
I believe so.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Is something like this CBD, CBD block grant?
No, that's more of like a low-income scenario. It would not fund these kinds of services.
I mean, is there other type of grants that possibly that could be applied for?
For this specific use? I'm not even sure where to start that question. But I'll ask the question, but I'm not sure if there's any answer to it that I can, you know, just say, yes, there's money to fund this because I'm not sure.
No, I mean, the council will do whatever it has to do.
Yeah.
But maybe it's just that.
If there are sources of funding, I would agree that let's secure them from those sources rather than the taxpayer. I mean, really, this presentation is more along the lines of, do we want to help fund Pumpkinfest to continue? Or do we want to let it die? Because there's really no profit in it.
Well, if I may, we can see what Wunsaket does for Pumpkinfest. Do they seek outside funding? What do they do for horrible today parade? What type of funding, maybe even commercial funding for folks that want it? I know we do sponsorships out there, right? People sponsor. And this would be not under finance. I mean, this would have to be by the Pumpkinfest committee.
Well, I can ask Wunsaket. You know, I know the finance director, so I can ask that question about the funding sources. And maybe they can point me to the direction of a grant that I can let Ms. Federalstone know about. So might as well have me ask the question too, just to expedite it. But absolutely, it should be their project they should run.
Also, the other issues dealing with this, other types of funding, you know, as far as fundraising at this. I don't know what the Pumpkinfest had done previously.
Actually, we're in the process of helping them send out letters for donation requests currently. So finance slash administration is involved in Pumpkinfest through donating their time to help production of these letters, for example, that are going out through the administration's office on behalf of Pumpkinfest.
Which could be considered an in-kind service. Should that be supplied with great money?
Correct. Exactly, we could use it as a match.
Okay. The other thing too is that I'm good friends with Councilman Gillette from Wunsaket. They were just able to raise with a 10, 10 club, $12,000 for the senior services in the city. Basically, $10 a week, you know, for 10, $10 a month for 10 months. Basically, a hundred dollar ticket. And they raised $12,000. And I'm not sure whether we take the amount of money that Pumpkinfest needs to operate. But I mean, it's goodwill within the community to assist and make it, to help them defer costs as well. I'd be more happy to assist them in doing that.
That answer would not be until the budget process anyways. So if we can secure funding between now and then, it's a moot question. I just wanted to broach it because she broached me with it. And I believe the point of this was a town function, as you just mentioned, bring people together. Why price them out of it? You know what I mean? That's at least that, that's how I look at it.
Yeah, but they need, you know, they need to, you know, grab the example.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion by council voter action on PBIC communications for bond, Mrs. Nano. Roads, business, and space, and presentation of architect, solicitor, reps for survey.
For, I'm gonna kind of jump around a little bit. For the survey, I'm going to push that off until after the next PBIC meeting, which is Thursday. So that lives here on our next agenda for town council. For the roads, we are on track or actually a little bit ahead, as you heard Mr. Cardello mention. For municipal buildings, we are past schematic design and we are in planning development. So the size of the offices that are needed. The stakeholders are working with the architect to figure out exactly what space is going to be utilized for what is it that they need. So that's ongoing right now. And they are going to give us an update on that on the fourth as well. And for schools, I'll speak for Mr. Bassett, who I believe left. We are not getting clear language for a contract to enter into with NESDE, who was the only bidder on school consolidation options or anything that we can do for the schools to have an outside opinion of what's the best way to move forward. Is it, do we need to build? Would our curriculum be hurt by adding different grades into existing buildings for consolidation? Do we need to change our footprint? So Mr. Bassett's still working on that. But I don't have an answer for that. It is on the agenda for Thursday.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Item C, discussion by council voter direction of use of town vehicles. Town in St. Elhamilton. Question I have is that are vehicles in town supposed to have the seal of the town on them? All vehicles? And are there a few that do not?
No, they all do.
They all do not?
We're waiting for seals to come in. Mr. Pendergast is the fleet manager. He got them and they're on.
Okay. Also, and this is that the, which brings us to the use of a town vehicle for personal use. It's not something I wanted to, didn't want to really broach lightly. However, in the confines of our charter, it states that town vehicles cannot be used for public use for personal use, right? And I'm trying to, I can't fathom a town vehicle going to Maryland and back. What town use could it possibly be?
There has been a consistent use of a town vehicle given by the town council. If you feel that the way it's been handled for the last 25 years is not right, then what I suggest is you decide on a policy that you think might work for future administrators. I'm doing nothing different than anybody else.
Yeah, but.
I'm doing nothing different than anybody else.
I don't care about past practices.
Well, I think you have to because that's what everyone, there is a car given to an administrator every year based on past practice.
For town use?
For their use while they're town administrator. You can ask Mr. Dan Andrews.
Dan.
I'd like to first, I'd like to ask solicitor, confines of the town charter says town vehicles not be used for personal use, am I correct?
Well, it's not the town charter.
Well, you said town ordinance, I'm sorry. In the confines of town ordinance.
Well, there is some limited exception for personal use for commuting under the IRS rules. That's what your ordinance says.
Right. I'm just saying is that how can one justify personal use outside the state?
No different.
In any, in any confines whatsoever?
No different than any other administrator that took it outside of state.
Then they violate, then they violate the town ordinances.
That ordinance was written for public vehicles. Vehicles that we have in public works.
Well, it's a good to town.
And the reason we know that is because it says that if anyone needs to utilize a vehicle, they need to get permission from the town administrator first. That's what it is. Now, if you don't want this, if this is going to be a bone of contention again, this has been a bone of contention with me since 2008. And it has been, I've checked with previous administrators too, that I spoke to this week.
I know, for example, former town administrator Faracy was a town manager up in East Bridgewater. She had to take her personal car to drive to East Bridgewater. And when she was there, she got a vehicle to use?
No.
Nope? That was not the case?
That was not the case.
So would you use?
But I was not an elected official. When I was an elected official for the town of North Smithfield, I did have a vehicle when I was the elected administrator. Now, the ordinance, I don't believe, was in at the time, back in 89 to 91. And again, you go by past practices to what the administrators were allowed to do with the car at the time. As an appointed town manager in West Bridgewater, I did negotiate with my board of selectmen to receive a monthly stipend for the use of my vehicle whenever I needed to go on town business.
Okay, thank you. Questions, any questions from the council?
Historically, if I can kind of add this. I do recall when Dan Andrews was the administrator, it got very contentious because the council approved the purchase of a brand-new Ford Explorer. And that vehicle was going weekly up to, well, many times it went up to New Hampshire. So that was a contentious issue back then too. And I can't recall what the council at that time did to correct that. But I think the weekly trips or whatever they monitor, I don't want to say weekly, I don't want to say that, but the multiple trips, I think, diminished. But that's easily, you know, researchable.
Josh, tell me.
I actually researched the ordinance and it was passed in 2004. Your first term in office was '08. So there's really four years of precedent that was set after the ordinance. The ordinance was set in '04. So there's basically two terms would have set. You basically had a chance to change the precedent.
Why?
Well, you're saying precedent was set by former administrators, but the vehicle policy, the ordinance wasn't accepted by the council until 2004.
That does not relate to the administrator's vehicle. It's not noted in there at all.
Right, pro or against?
Right.
It says any town vehicle. Is yours, is your car a town vehicle?
With the permission of the, so I'll give myself permission. Is that what you want me to do?
Well, the council, I don't think.
That's what it says. That's what it says. If we're going by the letter of the law, I will give myself permission to use the vehicle. If you don't want me to use the vehicle, please all file with you. Decide on what you want to do and let me know.
So you felt.
Really a very agreeable one, just following what's happened before.
So you felt it was okay to fuel up the car, drive it to Maryland, spend the weekend there?
How do you know all this? How does anyone know this? So there has to be somebody giving information on mileage or when I filled up.
Yeah, with the ACRA request.
No, 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 no. Because people wouldn't know that. People wouldn't know where I went. I can put a leaving four now.
It was not like breathing in and out.
Because someone asked me and I told the truth. Did you take the vehicle to Maryland once? Yes, I did.
And there was an ACRA request submitted where.
And it didn't state the date that I went there. They would have had to state the date. And then I would, you would have to, had to cross-reference the date in question or the date in question with the mileage vouchers that I file all the time and determine then.
So you're saying you use no town fuel for your trip to Maryland?
I filled that car up on my own line.
When you filled up, is that on your return trip or did you take gasoline?
No, I mean, there was some, there was some gasoline.
That's an important distinction.
There was some gasoline in the vehicle. I don't know, quarter of the tank.
The vehicle was empty when you, when you?
Was it empty? It was about maybe quarter of a tank. And then I filled it, I filled.
No, I'm back to that.
I was, I was kind of on the same route. I mean, if, if you went on vacation with town gas in the car and if you left with town gas in the car, you used town gas to go on vacation. I have no problem with you as the administrator. If you need to pick up a loaf of bread, if you need to go to Hartford for Mayor's thing, I have no problem with that. But to go on vacation, a six-hour drive roughly, and say it's because you're the public safety director, you need to get back in an emergency. There's nothing that can't be handled with technology today that you need to be back in at six hours. I mean.
Well, I still spent my own gas.
I was wearing a tire on the vehicle. So can I ask you this, just personally, personally? Do you think it was a prudent thing to take the town vehicle to Maryland on a vacation? Is that what it was?
It was an overnight. And I'm not going to give people any information about what I do when I'm not on the clock. So it was not, it was a Saturday. Under normal circumstances, we don't work Saturdays.
Then if you don't work, then why would you have the car out of state?
Well, because I'm not in the office, Mrs. Faracy.
But you're not on the clock.
I am on call 24/7. Now, you're splitting hairs.
No.
You are all splitting hairs. I'm not going to talk about this anymore. You make a decision. I'll gladly get an opinion if it's legal. And then we will move forward with it. I mean, that's over the, we have wasted much too much of these people's time who have been here for hours waiting to hear something and waiting to speak on something that affects them.
It does affect them. It's their taxpayers, they're taxpayers of the town. It affects them.
I'm not, I'm not going to dispute that there is a cost associated. But that cost has been associated with that position for 20 years. If you choose not to have that be an asset, then please make it for the next town administrator because it will not be me to go through this for the last eight years. I will gladly buy, once I get a legal opinion. But I will buy by what is in our ordinance, not the charter.
Any other questions?
Just a point of clarification. Having a car is a privilege. Is it seen as a benefit to your position as town administrator?
Well, not only to mine, but to everyone who is in this position throughout the state. I did a survey. And every single person in this position who is elected, as Mrs. Faracy said, has a vehicle.
Right. And then I was going to follow up my question to Mrs. Faracy. You said, I was paying attention, but I didn't quite catch what you said. You used your own car but asked for a stipend or some reimbursement for maybe mileage or.
Just so you know, the position that I held in West Bridgewater was an appointed one, like you gentlemen and ladies hiring me to be your administrator.
Right.
And I sat down with my board of selectmen every three years to negotiate a contract. So I actually had a contract. And one of the provisions that I negotiated was a monthly stipend for gasoline, for trip stipend. Rather than my having to submit a weekly report saying I did 3.5 miles running around the town or 2.7 miles going to this meeting or that, we came up with an equitable figure of what the town would pay me.
And that was to reimburse you for wearing, carrying your own vehicle?
Right.
You were town administrator in North Smithfield, correct?
I was town administrator in North Smithfield, elected in 1989 to 91. Yes.
Did you have a car?
Yes, I did.
Did you use that car for personal use?
Yes, I did, when it was necessary.
Did you go out of state and did you have other people in the car?
I may have had other people in the car. I would have gone out of state if I had a business adventure to go to. But since I also had three children, most of the times when I was going out of state, it was with my husband and my children.
So you took a personal car?
We took a personal car. Those were my circumstances.
And your benefit as a stipend, was that taxed?
The benefit as a stipend was not taxed in West Bridgewater. But I also had a, Debbie would remember. It was about a 10-year-old, 15-year-old police cruiser, which was my vehicle. And, you know, lo and to me, if I were to stand up and say I wanted a new car, they would say, well, why do you want a new car? You know, it was like, you got the leftovers from the police department. I think the town council of the town has treated the administrator's car with much more civility since I was there.
As a matter of fact, if I might, Mr. President, there were some members of the council sitting right here that said, we need to get you a new car, ma'am administrator, because the one you have right now has a hole in the floorboard. And wasn't, and I think Mr. Pendergast could attest to that. I didn't ask for a new car, I was hoping. But there are certain people, Mr. Zunsky, you're the one that wanted one.
You know, I have to side with you on that because.
And you didn't. It was, but you didn't ask me then if I'm going to use it for certain things.
You mentioned my name, so I'd like to end the conversation. As the town planner, I can see the highway going by in the passenger side with floorboard. I know the condition of our car, way before Mr. Pendergast was here. Yes, I believe a safe vehicle, but it comes back to taking the vehicle out of state hundreds of miles away. That is the issue. It's not the new vehicle. I would like every one of our town employees to be in a safe vehicle, which they now are under Mr. Pendergast's fleet maintenance. But the issue that was brought up, and I think our councillors are sharing the same issue, was to go 300 miles away, 400 miles away. And it was not just from overnight, was it? How many days were you in Maryland?
That's irrelevant.
Well, that's not.
No, it really isn't.
Because if you're in Maryland and you're commuting on roads in Maryland, it's not irrelevant. And if you're taking private passengers into a town vehicle, I don't believe it's irrelevant. I think that there's liability.
There isn't.
Well, you know, why open this up?
Well, because we've opened it up in 12, in 10, and then in 12, and then in 13. So we have all the documentation through the trust because these issues were raised by Mr. Philato before. And that is just the way it is. We have complete liability, complete coverage, liability coverage through the trust. Always have.
I just think it's an abuse of privilege, Madam Administrator. Take the vehicle down to Maryland to visit family. That's my personal.
I just find it absolutely really fascinating people know that I went anywhere.
I don't know, but you actually.
I don't know. But I'm going to get to the bottom of it, I'll tell you that.
It was in a newspaper article in.
Because I was asked.
Okay.
And I told the truth.
I don't know where you are. I don't know what I did.
You're all making assumptions that you know when I put gas in, when I didn't. Somebody's saying something to somebody.
Not all. I don't know when you did it, whatever you did. I don't even know that you went to Maryland.
Well, Madam Administrator did admit to it. And going to the beach. Where are we at, Mr. President? This is your agenda item.
I'm making a motion.
I'm sorry.
Making a motion that the gas use be investigated on the administrator's car for the time of her trip to Maryland by Public Works and the North Smithfield Police.
Second.
Jaffe?
Please, sir.
Good.
Motion, motion by Councilwoman Sully. Second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Als. Have the North Smithfield Police.
Mr. President.
Investigate. Well, there's a motion and a second.
Yeah, so.
Discussion, good discussion.
Would it be a police matter or would it be a civil matter? I don't know that any law is broken. Maybe the chief C sent back to me, he can answer if it really is a police matter or if it's civil.
I respectfully say, yes. You want to ask the solicitor's opinion?
Sure, understood.
Council can ask, certainly ask the police to investigate anything.
Okay.
I'm not going to comment on whether I, I don't, whether, I don't think, I don't think Councilwoman Sully is suggesting it's a criminal matter. I'm asking the police department for an investigation.
Look into it.
Okay. I don't think there's any criminal matter here at all.
All right, to me, if you're asking the police to look into something, it's probably just myself that they're looking to see if any laws. Okay.
Can I just clarify, I don't think that, because that's the purpose of your, that's not the purpose.
Well, the administrator said she used her own gas. So I know that the gas report that I saw was timestamped. So we should be able to find out if it was the town's gas or her gas.
Should be records, should be records from the highway department, boys? That could corroborate such, such actions?
Isn't that the ACRA?
I can't hear from the other side.
Isn't that what the, isn't that Mr. Bowles' side of the ACRA?
Please, sir. Does it call Gas Buddy? Is that the reporting system we use? Something like that? So where are we at? You made a motion.
Second, second.
I think it's quite apparent that you already have the information. I was on a medical leave when you got it. So it's no secret that I manage the fleet and I manage the gas consumption and all reports sent to the finance department. That report, I'm assuming, would be the same report that I would give to the police if they asked for. So it's a public record. It tells everything. And I'm assuming the information that everyone's talking about was this request from Mr. Bowles from the finance department. It did not come from my office. Monthly reports are given to the finance department. But that report is generated through my system at the Public Works facility. Fuel master.
Fuel master, so all those. Gas money.
Any further questions?
Just amend my motion, go through the finance department then. Mr. Pendergast, you said it goes through Jason?
Every, every month, the finance department is giving a detailed account of every vehicle that's in the fleet, the gases on it. So I do my motion.
How many months do you want, Mr. Sully?
Well, back to the dated question, I mean, the dates of the question.
Well, maybe previous, Mr. Sully.
Is that?
The previous, before I was questioned.
Before what?
Before the mileage and the gas, gas usage.
Before I got the car, you know, about that.
If you're trying to try to establish a pattern, you want to go back prior to the trip?
Go back to January 1st of 2015.
Okay.
Yeah, a motion by Councilwoman Sully. So maybe there is a motion to, to the dates from 2015 to current?
Current, yes.
So the main maker has withdrawn the motion. The second has withdrawn. I didn't get the second to draw.
Did we withdraw any motion and then make a new one, Councilwoman Sully?
Sure.
Okay.
Second, trust.
Wait a second. Wait a minute. Mr. Solicitor, can't you amend, amend the motion?
Don't stop, stop. I think it was simpler to just withdraw it. Because obviously, I think Councilwoman Sully is going to ask the finance directors to do the correction.
Okay. Motion was drawn by Councilwoman Sully. The second was drawn by Councilwoman Als.
I'm making a motion to have the finance directors supply the North Smithfield Police with the fuel consumption and usage of the administrator's car from January 1st, 2015 to current. to current date.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Soli, second by Councilwoman Als. Is any further discussion?
I have discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a clarification. What are you looking for as the deliberable? If, so if you give the police a report, or anyone for that matter, it doesn't matter who it is, if you give them a report of, okay, this is when this vehicle filled up, what do you want the police to give you back?
Well, the police aren't in it.
It's going to the Finance Department.
It's going to the Finance Department.
Your motion was for the Finance Director to give it to the police, unless I heard wrong.
The administrator had said that she did not use the town's gas for her trip.
Correct.
So if it turns out that she did use the town's gas for her trip, she stole from the taxpayers.
And that's a problem, yeah.
That is a problem.
Yeah.
And then that way inquire the police.
And then that way inquire, require police action.
Okay, so is the, just a point of clarification, is the Finance Director giving it to the police, giving that report to the police?
Yes, the Finance Director is the one in possession of the reports, correct, Mr. Pendergast? Yes.
And he's giving that to the police, and then the police...
Will work with the Finance Director, and if needed, Mr. Pendergast, to figure out how the report runs.
You have to, just for that one particular vehicle.
Correct.
Town administrator vehicle.
I still don't get what's gonna come out of it, but it's not, not in a wrongdoing situation, I just, the police are gonna get, let's say it's an Excel spreadsheet and it says, "This car filled up," and they're gonna look at it and they're gonna say, "Okay, so what?" And I just, I don't understand the task that they're gonna do, not, not the reason for them doing it.
If she filled up the morning she left on her trip, then we know that she filled up prior to leaving, and she didn't fill up on her own. And that's gas that she's using on her personal time.
No, I understand where the question is lying, but we're looking at the police to tell us that she filled up on the day that she left?
They're looking at the dating question, yes.
Or, or any, any use of gasoline in the vehicle on the trip?
What if you came back with more than what she left with? Didn't you over?
That's a point.
There you go.
Well, don't know that yet, because wear and tear on the vehicle as well.
Yeah, but I would think the administrator asked you right out that if there is no definitive line as far as the use of the vehicle, she said to you, "Tell me what you want me to do." If you wanna say, "Up till now, other people..."
Do you mind identifying yourself for the record, please?
Sure, later. I mean, we've already, this is the second, maybe the third meeting, that, as I think other people have said, have spent a lot of time on if somebody from the outside came in, they, they wonder if they were in Salem, Massachusetts on a witch hunt. I mean, this really is very, very petty. And she did say to you, "Tell me what you want me to do, clarify it." If you don't want her to use it, that you're saying wear and tear, or $30 worth of gas, she said, "Fine." But up till now, we know, and you mentioned Danny Andrews, and I can mention quite a few other administrators that use their car, town car, for other than going to the grocery store, or dropping their children off. So you, as the council, if that's what you do, as far as make the rules, instead of each one of you going at her, which that's what you're doing, and you did it at the last one, then clarify it. She's willing to go along with it. Why carry this on into what sounds like a petty witch hunt? Thank you.
Mr. President, if, I think the council needs to make a decision on if the car is a benefit, what expectations we have of the usage of the car. I think that is lacking in our current ordinances, and it seems that it could be, because what's something Madam Administrator had said, it's something that when I went through, when I read the ordinance, I kind of thought the same thing. All she would have to do is give herself permission. And that's how the ordinance reads to me, and I'm not saying going to Maryland was right, and I'm not saying when she filled up, I don't know, I don't know those things. But to your point, which you made very, very well, we need to decide what our expectations are, and then make sure that it's followed through, which, you know, it would be, hopefully. And if not, then we take steps to make sure.
Like I said, what we can do in a later, it won't be tonight, it'll be a later day, we can come up with a comprehensive plan of use of all town vehicles, not for personal use, and we can give stipulations of what vehicles can be used and not used for. And also having different, like in the private sector, there's logs that have to be, each vehicle has a log, basically, you know, from point A to point B, the mileage, we can, if you run it into a tracking system, you have a GPS put on it, all these things can be done. And like I said, it's just that, it was brought to, it was brought to, before the, before the council, I should say, the situation was brought to the council's attention, and we need to address it, and like I said, just the fact is, is that it will, it will change, but it won't be here tonight. And if there's any more questions, the town administrator, then therefore, you know, make them, and that's, and that's it, we'll move on with the rest of the agenda. Like I said, to me, is that in the private sector, you know, you use a vehicle, you basically pay for the mileage, based on, because the federal guidelines for using vehicles are 57 cents a mile.
It's going down, it's very...
Okay, whatever, whatever it is, but anyway, but that's, but that's, but that's something that to me should be, it's just a bone of contention, is that, you know, to use a vehicle that says in the charter, and it says, in the ordinance rather, you can't use a vehicle for personal use. And to me, is it going that kind of distance, or any of the personal use, to me, it's just not right. Maybe if our ordinances are lacking, then we'll have to, we'll have to address them in a, in a comprehensive fashion.
Mr. President, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd just like to request that, if that policy gets written, that it includes business use of personal vehicles as well. I mean, I use my car to go to seminars all over the state, and I get nothing for it. I'm sure other department heads use their personal vehicles to get nothing for it, too. We're gonna address one side, we should just address them both at the same time.
That makes sense.
I agree.
But if I'm not mistaken, is that if you do use your vehicle for personal use, you can write it up on your income tax as well? If you can take mileage, and you can...
Don't go, there isn't a counter.
All right, well, please...
That's only 15% of what you would reimburse me at, so I'd much rather have you reimburse me than deduct it at 15%.
Yeah, good, good idea, Chase, what would happen?
Mr. President, we are four minutes past.
Did we have a motion?
There was, there was, we had a motion, second. The motion is second, discussion. So we have four. Can we read back the motion?
We have the Finance Directors supply the North Smithfield Police Department with the gas use, usage of the town administrator's vehicle from January 1st to 13th on present date.
Mr. President, can I just, clarification on what role the council, like the police department, play in this?
But sure. Exactly my question, sure. Thank you.
Conversations are going, correct? We haven't taken a vote. So if we, if we, as the town council gets all those reports, and we see that there may be some questionable gas pumping transaction going on, at that point, we would come back and, I don't think we, we take the resources of the police department to do this at the point yet.
Okay.
Does, is that, is that agreeable with everybody?
Yeah.
Let's take a look at it, and if there's something that's questionable, we'll come before a council meeting, we'll discuss it, and if it deems that it goes to the police department, it does. If not, we say a statement right there at the meeting, we see no reason to follow.
If there's a criminal complaint, police department will investigate it. If it's an administrative investigation, police department will investigate. Fair enough.
Thank you. Can I spend five minutes to ask you this exact question?
For the Finance Director to supply the council with all the usage reports from the area 2015, to the President.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been rescinded, and then we've just made the motion, the second is called, let's call it.
Motion by Councilman Soli, second by Councilwoman Als, amend the original motion to have the Finance Director provide the information to the council from January 1st to the current date.
2015.
2015.
I'd just like to mention one thing, is the report is a month-end report, so I'll print whatever I have month-to-date, but it might be cut off a little bit.
Till January 31st.
What it was, okay.
2016.
Oh, okay, that's a 130 month, okay. Thanks.
Can you roll call out, Mr. President?
Ms. Als, yes, this is NATO.
Yes.
Mr. Soli, Mr. Zulinski, Mr. Boucher.
Yes. Chair, motion continue for a half an hour?
No. Second.
Motion by the Chair, second by Councilwoman NATO and Councilman Soli to extend. On my favor, say aye?
Aye.
N F E, discussion by council, what other action on appointments of boards of commission? Are there any appointments to the public safety commission? Okay, discussion by council, what other action, role, duty, action of public safety commission? The front of this, this particular board is just, there's three members, and I guess they meet not in a normal timeframe, like once a month, twice a month?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so the public safety commission, good evening. We do not meet once a month, we do not, we are not a standing committee. We meet at the pleasure of the council. So when the council finds a public safety issue that needs to be investigated, they call upon the commission to sit and investigate those matters, normally traffic and signage. We are appointed to see at terms, in my six years on the commission, I have only been called upon twice for official investigation. I would ask this council to consider making the public safety commission a standing commission, and having standing meetings for us, because I think it would be better for the town. We talked tonight, a little bit earlier on in the meeting, about several traffic issues surrounding Gray's Road, which is a town road, Greenville Road, Province Pike. I think the commission could probably narrow down at least what signs want the town, or what signs want to state, but the commission hasn't been asked to step forward and make any recommendations as to this. So I would just ask this committee to consider expanding the role of this commission, because we are volunteers, and we would like to serve the town, and we are called upon far too frequently.
When was your last, your last meeting that you're aware of? Was it 2000?
I couldn't recollect.
9, 2011?
So one-way road coming off of...
Yeah, that's a, the one-way road.
Back to road?
Coming off of Gray, I don't know when...
Yeah, back to road.
Right, I don't know when we issued that report.
Yeah, we may not have been utilizing the public safety commission as much as we should. And it's a great commitment.
It is.
And we have a journey on it now, which is great.
You do. Thank you for that acknowledgement.
So, but what, what, what does it mean, what crystal compass?
What would we have to do to make it a standing committee?
Well, you have to, well, do you believe that three members are sufficient? Do you think a five-member board would be better?
If we are going to be a standing committee and have no work to do, I think we require more, more members, but that's yet to be seen. So I can't answer that question.
You could act, maybe, you could act, dealing with maybe issues from the perspective of police and fire, as far as issues.
I'm sure the current members would be amenable to that.
Makes sense, yeah, sure. So if I may suggest, maybe Mr. Russell calls a meeting of the three, including yourself, and discuss this, maybe.
I think the council, I think you're going toward a five-member, which would give you more workers, excuse me, more people perform, perform, you know what I'm trying to say. More people available, so you'd have forums, definitely. And then it would be an allocation of workload to look at certain things, people with their expertise on this, or safety commission, so it does make a lot of sense. So something, we'd have to change the town rules to do that, but first of all, let's start with the folks that have been doing it, see if they're amenable to move forward to new members. Composition of that, that membership can be at the town council's pleasure. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. If I got the town, if I got the council to go vote on that, to have us come together for a meeting, I think I need a vote on that for us to come together.
So moved at the convenience of the board members?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Zulinski, second by Councilwoman NATO, to the council to make the, to the safety commission.
That's the dead...
Yeah. To discuss the extent, but of course, this council will decide whether it expands or not, but we certainly want the commission to be a part of this.
Absolutely.
And possible agenda items, if you're looking to, I don't know if you can follow Ironstone?
I haven't.
Yes, it's kind of in the letter here.
Yeah, I saw the letter. It was actually supposed to be on the agenda tonight, but it got missed. Didn't we vote on it the last meeting, the other night?
It was a meeting on the other side.
So I'm definitely not gonna pretend there's actually a call, I didn't know that. If you give me your email address, I will give you that one on Ironstone, and I would appreciate it futurefully as well.
The council's gonna meet with, with the members of the public safety committee? So...
Well, I was, I forgot to go.
No, is, do you want to have a follow meeting with all council members?
I think that the commission needs to meet first, and in order for our commission to be, I actually need the council to take a vote and allow us to meet.
Yeah, well, we made that motion, we had a second, so now we just have to vote on it.
And, and then if we want to have a joint meeting go forward, or have the commission come forward this board again on a future date, and another agenda, I'd be amenable to that.
Yeah, turning this off, you know what we want to accomplish, put it on the agenda and have the meeting.
Will do.
Yeah.
So we're gonna take a vote?
Chief Reynolds.
From Chief Reynolds. Could I make a suggestion? I can't speak on behalf of Chief Gilson, but if you're looking for to add two people to the public safety commission, I would suggest possibly having someone from the police department, and someone from the fire department on there, who can offer, you know, certain areas of expertise, and work as a team, but that would be a decision that, you know, would be able to be very vocal. Police department would be more than willing to participate as a board member.
Ms. Als, yes, this is NATO.
Yes.
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 Mr. President, can I just add an issue, so I just make a suggestion to the council?
Yes.
You might want to refer that ordinance to your ordinance committee for review, because you're gonna have to do two things to it.
Sure.
You're gonna have to change the membership, and you're gonna have to remove the language that says they only a, a committee upon call, and change it to a standing committee. Unless the council wants to do that, we can do that, but I hope Vice President Norman lives to have it read into the Ad-Hard Coordinates Committee.
Joe, Madam Quirk, if you don't mind, would you send that to Mr. Lance? And also all the members on that, here on that committee, so they know that it's coming, so we can, he can schedule it.
On the board, Mr. Zulinski? Are we allowed to do that from the agenda under the heading?
Well, we're talking, all what you can do, is, is any question, what you can do now is amend the agenda?
Just to schedule, it's always...
Just schedule, you can amend the agenda if you need to. You're not voting on it.
No, we're just scheduling. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Pendergast has been waiting a long time to get some information to you about that catch basin truck. I was wondering if we could just move it ahead. It's gonna get up early in the morning and get cracking.
All right. Motion taken on the new business item number 12. A, discussion by council, what other action on a waterbed of catch basin truck?
Second.
Motion by the Chair, second by Councilwoman NATO. On my favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Mr. Pendergast?
I believe Mr. Poplin's gonna handle it. The specs, as far as for the truck's needs, we're all done.
Aye. Mr. Pendergast?
I believe Mr. Poply is gonna get one.
The specs as far as for the truck's needs were all done by Mr. Pendergast. He believes that the two bids, both of these specs met the spec for us. So what we're presenting here through this memo is based on Mr. Pendergast's recommendation in addition to a finance review of this. There were two bids received for the catch basin cleaning clamshell truck. One was from New England Trucks, DVA Truck Solutions for a hundred fifty seven thousand and twenty dollars. The other was from Coastal International Trucks for a hundred sixty three thousand five hundred ninety seven. Based on the fact that both specs meet the needs for DPW, we are gonna recommend the low bidder, New England Trucks, DVA Truck Solutions for one fifty seven oh two oh. Now, the the real discussion about this item here is where are we gonna pay for it? So there's multiple sources that this can be used from. Being the turnaround time on the truck is seven months. It could be in FY seventeen capital. All bids were seven month turnaround, so, you know, we're stuck. And there's really not anything we can do. The fact that we're showing this faith to do this stuff, it is makes us look favorable with the DEM that we're acting. So we can put that out there, you know, obviously we're doing something about it. But really what the answer is, is there's multiple sources. So I did a recap and I'm gonna suggest that we fund this out of council contingency. The recap that I just did that today, there's a hundred fifty seven thousand dollars in change in contingency that has not been earmarked for any projects. That actually is enough to cover the full truck. If that's not amenable to the council, if you'd like to keep some wiggle room, there's a few other sources. We received a hundred thousand dollar reimbursement from FEMA for the snowstorms last year. Really, that should be earmarked for snow ice overages in the future. But if we because it's an unbudgeted revenue, if we wanna use that hundred thousand to pay for a portion of the truck, we can. It's basically found money that was not in the budget. There's a hundred thousand from that. There's a hundred fifty thousand dollar carryover for road repairs from the FY fifteen budget that's available in sixteen. It was earmarked for road use. If you vote to re earmark it from road use to truck purchase, that could be another solution. A third place that we can take it from is prior reserves. We're doing an analysis from revaluation. We've set aside more money than we need for a revaluation ten year cycle. There's about fifty thousand left there. So we could fund this truck with FEMA unbudgeted revenue of a hundred thousand in the balance coming from the reevaluation, reapropriation, if so be, so be it. We can take it from current year operations, which would be council contingency, or we could put it into a future capital program. So there's three sources. There's either past money we have, there is current money that we can earmark to it, or there's next year's capital budget process where it can be paid from. So it's kind of my suggestion is to eat it in the current year operations, get it over with and it's gone. But that's just my suggestion. I don't wanna speak for what the council may question, correct?
Just have a force of commission, Pendergast. Now, those two different trucks, you said that either one would be fine. Is there preference over one versus the other?
My mechanics have been inspecting this truck since two thousand eight, so.
Okay, all right.
It's it's the same spec. It's a general spec that goes out.
I just wondered, maybe it's one has a heavier duty suspension that I'm not aware of?
It's the it's the same spec. It's a it's a general spec that you have to go with. You can't say one or the other. So they have to say yes or no and comply with that general spec. And that's what my mechanics did and that's, like I said, this has been going back some time. Eighty eight model is a very good model, but it's a little.
Mr. President.
Pretty deep place, isn't it?
They don't, if I think what President Bush is trying to get to, if they if one of the trucks offers something over and above, what we give is a spec, they don't tell you that? They just say, yes, we we have this?
We put the general spec out and I'll tell you one thing that's in the the little bit is favor is the warranty. The warranty on all our trucks today is is probably the big pot of what we decide on. They have a special warranty through Toyota that is unmatched by anyone. So every similar to the Peterbills that we've just purchased in the last two years, we've had we have an extended warranty on those that we pay for. But one pot alone is a ten thousand dollar pot, which I'm sure that if that pot went on the Peterbilt trucks that we have, he would have a heart attack when I gave him FPO.
Yeah.
So the warranty is probably the first thing that my mechanics look at when we go through the spec. So that that alone stands by itself, all these two bits. In addition to finally having somebody in town that can service these trucks without taking them to Massachusetts.
Right, so this is Kino, right? Good. I'm glad that we're doing business with somebody in town. It's fantastic.
Mr. President, if I may, share my thoughts. Jason did a great job outlining, we have a hundred fifty seven thousand dollars in contingency. That's for emergency or for rainy day funds, whatever you wanna call it. I I would like to keep that money there. He also spoke about this found money of a hundred thousand from FEMA. Hopefully that'll be used for road salt or whatever we need to do for road repairs, excuse me, to maintain the roads during bad times. We have a hundred fifty K carryover from road use, which we haven't spent. We got a bond coming up. I don't know if that'll help us with bond money, we got a hundred fifty K or at least to do a couple month.
I think the idea behind that reserve is our contingency fund for the bond if it goes over the two point five. I think that was the idea in this assignment.
All right, so basically we could fund this out of this year's funding. Are you saying we have enough in our on our budget to fund this out of this year's funding?
Yeah, but it would come from contingency.
Oh, I missed that point, okay. I didn't know how much we had left in Mr. Pendergast's budget.
Okay. In his budget, there's no budget for to purchase a truck of this magnitude.
No.
And there's there's I think if there's any leftover money, we might have an extra twenty thousand from the soft shed that hasn't been spent because that came in under budget. But there's not a lot of available capital, unspent or unused capital to then re earmark to this.
So we could use a hundred thousand from FEMA to do this.
We could, yes.
And then whatever offset in the next cap in the next budget cycle.
We could do that. I could reserve the FEMA money, so when the truck comes in in July, that hundred is reserved from this year to that. And if the FY seventeen capital is the balance of the process, I mean.
Does that make sense from a financing point?
Well, a hundred thousand going through this year is better than zero and it all being kicked to the future. So anything we I I mean, I would prefer to take it all out of current year, but in the interest of you having, you know, protection or available money if there's a new thing that happens that, you know, you'd be earmarking all contingency to this.
Right.
If something happens in the next four months, your hands are other than taking it out of reserves anyways. So you give a little more flexibility to council decisions as well to do it in that two step approach that you suggest.
Okay, so we use a hundred thousand from FEMA, we can look to the next year's budget for the demeanor. We'll still have a hundred, no, this hundred fifty K, I'm sorry, just wanted to show this road use, we're not touching that.
We don't, not being touched at all. Contingency, not being touched at all.
Great.
So the hundred from the found money, fifty seven from FY seventeen capital.
That that would be my motion unless councils have another question anymore.
Chair's second, it makes fiscal sense.
Discussion, it's gonna be.
I'm sorry, maybe the budget committee wants to jump in.
It's gonna be submitted through the capital process first.
We have a program that January eleventh, all these issues were supposed to be submitted. So we should have put the whole truck in there, even if you're gonna use some of the money this year. So it's important to get this truck into that fiscal year seventeen capital budget. If you wanna split the money, that's fine, but at least let's try to follow a procedure every year that as we try to get into these large ticket items, we're gonna see them somewhere in the capital budget and then we can argue about which you need to take the money for. Follow a process.
Yeah, Mike, does this make sense? We'll take a hundred thousand this year.
Yeah, as long as we get it into the capital program, we're looking to buy a truck.
Okay.
It's in January eleventh, was supposed to be the deadline for the capital program. For the planning board to review.
Well, we just kinda committed it to the capital program. Yeah.
Just one point I'd like to mention in response to Mr. Refco.
This was an emergency DEM order. This wasn't necessarily, so that's another factor here. If we make no action, it just makes us look like we don't care about what the order is. If we make an action, it lends credibility that we're trying to address the issue and it worked with us. So that's just another point to be made that this this, you know, wasn't, you know what I mean? It wasn't just out of the blue that this has been needed. It's been needed for a while. It's been not addressed for a while. Swift action makes us look better than no action.
We have a motion, we can second? Second, we can second for a roll?
Can you break down the numbers again? Where it was.
Yeah, the motion is to take a hundred thousand dollars from the FEMA.
I I don't have the exact number, but it's about a hundred and five thousand three hundred for FEMA.
So right now, would you say a hundred thousand?
I'm just estimating the hundred. I'll do a full recap of the actual dollars at that point in time. So my estimate is about one oh five of the FEMA money with the balance of fifty two going through the capital.
Capital review process for fiscal seventeen, that that's the motion. Chair's seconds. Any further discussion? Give me the Madam Cook a vote, please.
Als?
I'm gonna recuse due to an email that Mr. Erickson previously sent out.
What?
I'm gonna I'm gonna recuse due to an email that Mr. Erickson previously sent out, that kind of misled that I was in a dis-